Go ahead. Are you ready?
Yes.
Call regular city council meeting of April 5th, 2023 at 7:00 PM to order. Please stand and join me with pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Mayor Allison.
Here.
Tom Baylor is absent. Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Casey Kinsman.
Here.
Melina Meyer is absent. Ann Schaefer.
Here.
Kristen Carpenter.
Here.
And Ken Jones.
Here.
That's a quorum of council.
Any approval of the regular agenda? Any objection to approving the agenda? Okay, the agenda will stand approved then with no objection. Disposals of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications.
I don't have a conflict per se, but I do just want to declare that on the land disposal maps, there are a couple lots that are being changed from not available to available that I will be putting a letter of interest in on. However, that letter of interest has not been put in yet. Wanted to just declare.
Okay, I would rule that that's not a conflict because it doesn't give you an advantage over anybody else. It's whether it passes or fails, it's open to everybody, so. Anybody else? Communications by petitions for visitors. Guest speakers, we have none. So audience comments on agenda items. Anybody in the audience? Any comments on the agenda items? Hearing none. Care persons, representatives of boards and commissions, CCMC. Said nobody was on for that, right?
No, correct.
No word.
No.
Any there? No other reps here. Student council, we don't have a student council rep here or a report. So the consent calendar is before you. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar. Okay, it's just.
I can just take a roll on that roll call. I just wait a minute in case anybody wants to pull.
For Casey, I don't know if you consent calendar, we just put it before you. If there's anything anybody wants to pull off of that to discuss in detail or you just throw it out. Item A, whatever, whatever it is, can then we'll pull it out, put it somewhere else on the agenda. So. If it is pulled in now, so go ahead, Susan.
Okay, so on the consent calendar, Casey Kinsman.
Agreed.
Yes, just like, yes, sure. Ken Jones.
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter.
Yes.
Ann Schaefer.
Yes.
Tom Baylor is absent. Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
And Melina Meyer is absent. The consent calendar is grouped.
Thank you. Minutes, we're on the consent calendar. We have no bids. So reports of officers, mayor's report. I don't have anything new other than what we've already been reported. I think we've got the Coast Guard guy coming in the middle of the month. And that's about it. Any questions? Managers' report.
In the packet is a printed managers' report, but I did want to verbally praise our police department for the work that they've done all year, but specifically the way that they addressed and handled a convict that escaped from jail. It was a rather traumatic event for the officers involved, but they were highly professional in the way they responded to it. And I just want to commend them for that. Also in the packet is a financial report. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer that. And I also want to acknowledge a few things. We've Minnie Briggs, who's a longtime city employee and is part of the museum staff and has been holding together events and making events happen here at the Porto Valley Center. Will be retiring at the end of the month. And I just want to have a shout out to her for her hard work in stepping up in every way to fill holes when needed and to make things happen in this building in a pretty remarkable way. So I want to commend her for that. And then Chris Iozzani has left the fire department. He was here. He's committed citizen and volunteers for other city boards and commissions, but he's left the fire department. So I also want to thank him for his service. And I open it up to any questions you might have.
Questions for the manager? Online, any questions? Who's on? Is it Ann or Dixon?
Uh, yes.
Okay, well, it looks like you're going to get off easy tonight. Okay, any questions on any of the reports in there, the financials or? Do we have a South Harbor update? Or rep, oh, we have a, excuse me, ask.
Sam is available to talk about refugees, the bear things. She's going to provide an update because I know that was an issue and she's done quite a bit of work, so. Be available to come up?
Yeah. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. It's not quite what I had wanted because I spent two weeks battling a sinus infection and trying to recover from that. So, but I have done some work on it. I was hoping to have a little more. But I am working with, well, I should say Aaron and I are working with some of the mobile parks to try to get dumpsters, high density areas, get dumpsters in there and eliminate individual pickups. Some just do not have the space to have a dumpster. We are also working on the code to require that trash not be in the trash can before 7:00 AM and only on a pickup day. That allows for some enforcement when it's needed. Currently don't have that. Which is amendment to the, well, ordinance to the code. Emily and Charlotte, Charlotte couldn't be here tonight. She's field work. Are working on a newspaper article. And also they are pulling together fishing names and some of the other bearware information put on our Facebook page and our webpage. And I've asked if they could like redo it in two or three months, you know, so that it comes back around. Doesn't go all the way to the bottom. And then also Charlotte and I are trying to pull together what we call a mug up, like we did with the harbor where we said public meeting, pretty casual, that gives some preparation on bear awareness. She has some topics. She wants to talk about poultry, electric fences, and do it as a public meeting here. Hopefully before May, but we're, everybody's trying to coordinate their schedules. So that's all I have. It will all be helpful. We will be deploying bear dumpsters shortly for the places that we pull them out in the winter where maybe there's some elderly people in the, like the coast. Townhouses, places like that where it's really difficult for those guys to pick those heavy lids up. So those will be going out shortly. Stop, it's snowing.
Well, the bears are awake. Some of them are anyway. The brown bear tracks it, shared.
Yeah. My husband says so too. Does anybody have any questions or thoughts?
Any questions for Sam, Kristen or Ann?
This is Ann.
Yeah, go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think a mug up, community meeting is a good idea. Well, thank you for doing that.
Okay, yeah, I should have some details up pretty quickly.
Mayor Allison.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, and I know they're already published, but I was thinking too with the bear stuff, maybe we could publish pickup times and pickup days for everybody.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
You know, Dixon and I rush out there to get it out before 7:00 AM. We're old, so. But I think that would be really helpful just to remind people when their times are.
And I think that the ordinance is just, you know, you can't have it out the night before.
Right.
That's in fact, yeah. And yeah, yeah, and I think not only just the pickup times, but we can never promise you we'll be there at eight, but you show up to work at seven.
Yeah. The earliest time they might be.
Yeah, that's probably a good way to phrase it.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Some of the bears don't care about the daylight, but there's a few. Ours, ours knew when the next day was garbage day and trolled the neighborhood the night before, just looking for people that put it out early. So that should help a little bit, anyway.
Yeah, it gives it's just a tool for fishing and and police too.
All right, thank you, Sam.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Does that mean manager Howard for you?
Yes, I think we have an update. The harbor project is obviously still actively going forward. We're still seeking funding and there'll be more and more communication in the next couple of weeks and months, certainly ahead. So we'll, I'm certain how I report in the next meeting.
This is my information. What is, what is the amount of funding that is totally?
We, we committed, council, city council committed the balance that was needed to get the project started, which is closing in on $4 million, 3.9 million. And our hope is to raise as much of that as possible. So we're applying for federal grants and private grants, well, not private, the Denali Commission and that deadline's next week and a few other grant sources that we're looking at, but 3.9 something.
Thank you. And where, what percent design are we at now?
We're about three design items short of completing 65%. So a couple gangway things, electrical elements, but yeah, three or four different elements of the, about a dozen different elements, I think, up to 65%. We suspect we'll be done with that in about another week or so. Working through some electrical metering interface things, just making sure that the utility matches what the electrical designers have and so a few things, but we're real close to clearing 65%. And 95% should be late May, early June. And that's like, we're done. Everybody signs off on everything at 95%. And we stand by for procurement and then demolition and stuff.
Okay, so fifth, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, clerk's report.
We, mostly Tina, has been busy receiving appeals. We are in the property assessment appeal period and that closes Friday. So if anybody has one or has been thinking about one, then you need to get it into us by Friday. And then the assessor will come down next week and spend some time trying to work those out with people. And then whatever's left that didn't get worked out, we will have board of equalization on Monday, the 17th of April.
You share how many?
Oh, we currently 66, but you know, often a high number of those wind up getting worked out between the assessor and the appellant before it gets to the board of equalization, so.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any questions for Kirk? Okay, we're going to run into correspondence. Proposed rights for the Amco. DNR lease for Noble Ocean Farms. Comments, Allison?
Yeah, I would just like to thank Noble Ocean Farms for reaching out to CD of you when it came to selecting your site. And yeah, just want to put that out there. If any future applicants would take that time to reach out to CD of you, it can avoid conflict between user groups.
Okay, ordinances and resolutions, resolution 042311. A resolution of the Council of the City of Porto, Alaska, authorizing the city to lease with an option to purchase three police vehicles from community leasing partners for $177,450 and to appropriate $41,032.07 for the 2024 payment of that lease with option to purchase and approving the use of sole source procurement through the innovative procurement method to lease the vehicles with the option to purchase.
Mayor Allison.
Yes.
So moved.
Moved, is there a second?
Second. One second.
I think it was Carpenter first.
Carpenter first. Thank you, thank you all. Okay, Councilmember Sherman.
I believe this was in that budget that we discussed earlier this year or last year. And we talked about the community leasing, leasing partners and Chief Police Goss had done a lot of research and moved this method to save us some money, so I'm in favor of this.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Yeah, I'm in favor of this. I, the city conduct further research to make sure that this is a legal secure and not get any mature funds like our vehicle, our entirety of replacement.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kinsman.
Yes, thank you staff for the time you put into this. Very, very thorough. Yes, I and appreciate the, I guess, creativity put into this procurement request. I, I'm in support of it.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Um, yeah, um, I guess my only question is how many vehicles we'll have after this? Because we're going to go up one, one couple of cycle out if they can be used.
You got muffled there at the, about halfway through that, Ann. Could you repeat that?
Oh, shoot. Um, is this better?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering how many vehicles the Public Safety Department will have after the purchase of three new ones? And then what the plan is for, if there are vehicles that are going to be cycling out, if they can be used in another area for the city?
I've invited Chief Goss up in here. We'll answer that. And I want to follow up with a little bit more information as well.
So with the purchase of these three, that'll give us four new vehicles. We're planning on keeping them for seven years. Keeping them in good shape so we can turn around, either sell them and buy our next set of vehicles. The vehicles that we have now, I've, I've talked to Helen about it. I'm willing to give. One of them's completely out. Another one that's sitting in front of our stations. It's run, it runs. It's not in the greatest shape, but I know like Malvin or somebody in the city said they could use it. So we're willing to part ways with it that way. We just have to strip all the equipment out of it. So yeah, that's where we're at right now.
And I think what we city staffers attempting to do and will be bringing it forward to a work session for council's consideration is to start really thinking about, you know, life cycle of vehicles and other equipment and really planning for replacement. One of the things about Chief Goss's situation is the vehicles got to the place where they just weren't reliable for them. And we don't want to get into that situation again. So we're looking at life cycle, usable life cycle of all of our equipment and trying to identify replacement schedule. So that's coming before you for everything. And the second thing is that community leasing partners, and since we do have legal validation of using this mechanism for funding things, it can be used for anything that's equipment. So we can buy larger equipment that maybe we just can't write a check for, you know, $500,000 tomorrow, but we can go out as far as eight years and lease purchase basically anything that we might need. Through our normal procurement process, we still have to go out to bid. We have to identify the appropriate source for whatever it is we're trying to buy. And then the purchase actually happens through community leasing partners. And I think it's just one of those ways that will help us get up to, on step with our, the equipment and vehicle replacement. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there that you will likely see these kinds of purchases again through this entity.
Councilmember Schaefer, were you done with your questions?
Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I just have a question for staff. So I read through the memo and the communication form. I guess maybe I was missing the part that talked about this is a lease purchase, but what is the purchase price at the end of the lease or is this just a finance agreement?
It's just a finance agreement essentially.
We're calling it a lease purchase for legal reasons?
Yes. And so basically we've, we're financing these vehicles. There's no buyout. We just established a five-year payment plan and it, it's, it's the same interest rate whether we go eight years or five years or whatever. So the longevity is really related to what we can afford. The number that is in front of you is basically what we had put in the budget. At this number though, we can make a placement this year if we choose. We can also delay to 2024. So you'll notice that the appropriation is for 2024, which we have not budgeted yet for and it hasn't been approved. But this action would actually commit us to a payment in 2024. And that number would be budgeted annually through the police department budget.
And with that last payment, the cars are ours.
Yep.
So since it's in this year's budget, what is, what's that money going to go to if we don't make the payment this year? Like if we choose to put it off to 24?
We haven't made any decision around that and I'm sure Chief Goss has some other equipment needs, one of which I know is coming up for quite a bit of money that was not budgeted. So there'll be other things brought before you that we would recommend leaving that, those resources in the police department budget to take care of other unfunded or underfunded or equipment that is essential to change. One of the things that I know came up not budgeted is the security of our jail cells and preventing what happened a month ago from happening again, not budgeted. So we have some things that Chief Goss and his staff have identified are really essential to provide a secure location for anyone who's in their care and for themselves. So those are the kinds of things that I think with their department in particular, there's a lot of unanticipated and whatnot.
Yeah, if I can just touch on that is I do have somebody coming out that sets up all the security stuff at the big jails in Anchorage. He's coming out here for free. He's going to walk through our jail and recommend some things that we possibly need. I have an idea of what we need. I told him what we want. So kind of a quick little rundown of it is where are jails, when we close the doors or we have the inmate close the doors, they automatically lock. Instead of us having to put ourselves in danger going in there, the locks are from 1976. So we have to do push here, pull here, they don't go. And if you have a competitive subject, it makes it very difficult. So with that in mind, we just dispatch beer control center, they can hit a button, open the door or unlock the door. So we tell them which door to unlock and then we have speakers in there so we can talk to the inmates. So that's kind of the route we're looking at. Of course, we have to look at the price and everything else when it comes out, but he's willing to come out and help us out for you, just to give us kind of an idea of what park, what we're going to do, which is a big deal.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I guess I have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we know what kind of cars they're going to be yet or?
Yeah, I don't know if you guys seen Officer Pfizer's truck. It's, it's a Chevy 1500. So this, like it says in there, it's going to, with this price, it's fully outfitted for things that we need. One, one truck's going to be the K9 vehicle and the other two are for my other two officers.
So they're all going to be pickups?
Yeah.
I have a question. So will we see this annually before us? Or is this from moving forward, we'll just discuss the payment during our budgeting process?
Correct. For this particular procurement.
Thank you. Any other questions? You're done then. Is this a roll call or?
Um, we should do a roll call on this one. Okay, so on resolution 42311. Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
Ken Jones.
Yes.
Casey Kinsman.
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter.
Yes.
Tom Baylor is absent. Melina Meyer is absent. Ann Schaefer.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. There is no unfinished business. Comes down to new and miscellaneous business, council election of a member to serve as vice mayor.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Kristen.
Um, yeah, I think, I think nominating House Member Ann Schaefer as Vice Mayor until the first meeting after the beginning will be considered until elected in the 2024 regular selection.
Okay, Ann Schaefer has been.
Second.
Nominated in second. Any other nominations? Hearing done, then all those in favor of Ann Schaefer, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Did I hear Ann?
Yes.
Yeah, she was the little husband.
She was, but.
I said.
Close?
I said it.
Okay, congratulations. I have you filled in very, very nicely the times you have and appreciate your willingness to serve. Next.
Thank you all.
Next is a council motion regarding the 2023 land disposal maps. It's 60.
Mr. Mayor, I move.
The mayor.
Councilmember Jones has a report.
Mr. Mayor, I move to direct staff to begin the noticing processes for land disposal map update based on proposed 2023 land disposal maps.
Okay, it's been moved by Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Schaefer. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I went to the planning and zoning meeting a couple of weeks ago. They spent a lot of time talking about this and the staff has spent a lot of the time working on this and I think they've done a really good job and I commend all the effort that's gone into this and I will be supporting it for that reason.
Councilmember Schaefer.
I am also support, I liked how they included all the information in the packet, the bullet points of what section it's changed and the previous map that we said compare. And I also like how they leaned more towards making things available. You know, so people can see what's available and what could potentially be done with the land. So I'm supporting.
Councilmember Sherman?
I can almost echo Councilwoman Schaefer's comments.
Councilmember Kinsman?
Yeah, right in line. Thank you staff for the time you put into this. This, I can tell was not a small feat. And again, thank you for, for my purpose, personal purposes, for seeing the contrast from '21. Very, very helpful. So thank you. And, yes.
Councilmember Carpenter?
I would second the comments about the, you know, and the changes, you know, the changes, but thanks to staff for the time they put into this, and I, I'm in support.
Okay, and I would echo all of those comments as well to the Planning Commission and the planner for, for doing the work on this, you most of you have heard my comments before that I think everything is, is available and for sale for the right price and right proposal. So I was appreciative to see the additional availabilities out there, you know, where we can't be complaining that there's no land available when we've got land tied up that could be used for something, so I appreciated, appreciated that. Any other comments on this? Yeah, Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I guess one comment and more of a question for the city planner is, in the shipyard, that whole section shows as green, I thought we'd de-spat already.
You might be looking at the 2021 maps, I included the 21 and the 22, or 21 maps and the proposed 23 maps, just so that you could, but because yeah, if you look at page.
That's, well, thanks.
Okay, yeah.
And then I guess would ask if Kevin wanted to say anything before we vote.
Yeah, just one thing, I just brought this to show you, these are the notice signs that I have printed up because the new code requires that when we change something from a not available to available, that we notice it on the property, and I just didn't want you all to see these go up randomly and have no idea what they were, or get asked by the public, so this is the notice sign, we will just, whenever they're reusable, so we'll laminate whatever paper we're putting on and staple it into this area, and then we can reuse the signs again and again, so.
That's excellent.
All right.
Is there, I guess, maybe, or I guess in what is put in there is the code reference and?
Yeah, there'd be, there'd be a little spiel of, the, the sign is up for this reason, here's the background info and stuff like that, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, you're next. And thanks again to the Planning Commission for their work.
Do those go up on every single lot?
Just the ones that are changed from not available to available, because that's what the code changed.
But for that one where there's seven in a row, are you just going to have seven signs every 25 feet?
The code technically says every property, so following the code, yes, and the corner lot will get two because I think it says it has to be on each right away.
Okay.
So.
How many of those did you buy?
Twenty-five.
For making them reusable.
Yeah.
It'll be a whole new election season.
How long will those be up for?
It's a thirty-day notice, and then it'll come back to you for the final approval of these maps.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, let's, let's do a roll call again since we have a couple on that.
Okay. Okay, on, I think, does everybody remember the motion? The motion that was written in Kevin's memo. Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Tom Baylor is absent, Melina Meyer is absent, Anne Schaefer?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
And Ken Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you. Get to the right packet here. Okay, council concurrence of mayor's appointment to fill a vacancy on the Harbor Commission, and suggesting Kate Laird for that position, so looking for motion?
So moved.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Sherman, I mean, Schaefer.
I'm going to move, twelve seconds.
Okay, thank, thank you. Any comments, questions? Again, we have had more than, more than one adequate candidate, and I appreciate the willingness of all of these people to serve and, and confident that Kate will do a good job on my Harbor Commission, so. All those in favor of concurring with my appointment, say aye.
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 Close? Motion carries. Any agenda, CIP, list, calendar? Et cetera?
Et cetera.
What have we got for next meeting? Do we have some special things planned?
The Capitol work session is probably...
I didn't think we, we did yet, do we? No. Well, housing is May seventeenth, what's the Capitol?
So that's all the equipment and buildings and facilities assessment, we can do that as a work session, whether it's during the meeting or whether you want to do it as a separate.
The, the assessments on all the buildings that you just had done, that report you're presenting, oh, okay, in a work session then? So, six o'clock?
Are they ready to go for?
I mean, it's, it's where we are, we've got a lot of information to share, and it probably will be something that will be, we'll add to it as we go, but it's a good start.
And an hour work session is good, six, six o'clock?
So can you do that at the next meeting? Well.
And two days before that, we're doing.
At the BOE, yeah.
We could postpone it to another meeting too, if we feel like a quarter utilization.
No.
No.
So you're good?
No.
I think we're ready to look at it.
I think there will be quarterly reports, I've been meaning to send an email. Quarterly reports next time. I'll look at those guys and say it. And, I don't know.
Anybody have anything they want to see on the next agenda?
Again, for you being new to this, but just looking at resolutions ordinances under proposed items on there, I would maybe like to have discussion or see the resolution one-one, two-one, four-two, placing ballot prop to change council seats undesigned, if you move to the top, or move for the next meeting, or move sooner than later. Fresh on our mind coming out of.
Yeah, I've been looking at that stuff.
And ready for next year, hopefully, one way or another.
I have, I think, the item that was before us in 2021 for that same thing, so I'll just bring that maybe just for a discussion at the next meeting? Does that sound good?
Yeah, I think we can.
Or put it on as a resolution again to just put it on.
Well, I, I think there's some, there were.
I would like to see it.
I personally had some issues with the, the last way it was.
Oh, okay, okay.
I think it was combined with the mayor's, but there was some combination.
Okay, all right, but I'll gather all the materials we have and bring it for a discussion room.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Kristen.
Thanks, so in section A, the future agenda items, and then section B, regulation important one of items, it seems like given what we specifically demand, have to have item five to pass, A and item one to do?
Sounds good to me, I agree. Do you, does everybody see that?
Yes.
So five will go away because we are taking steps to do the land disposal maps, and then one under B, since that was referred until the next time or whatever, we're taking those steps, so. Thank you, thank you, Kristen.
I have, I guess one thing that's new.
Would you like, Kristen, finish your?
Yeah, I was just going to say one, three years old, like under A, are any of them, you know, all, almost, some of them are three years old, some of them are two years old, but they are up in there to be by the three address in progress. Moving forward, isn't it?
Yes, it is, we can provide an update on that.
On which one?
City addressing.
Oh, oh, oh.
Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, so one of the things that I guess will probably be talked about during the housing workshop, I want to make sure that it gets mentioned and not left off the radar prior to that meeting, is a potential code change on some of the building restrictions, right now we're restricting all new buildings to less than three stories, and I would like, but also less than fifty feet, and I would like to see us address that to just be fifty feet, and not limit the number of stories, we, we have buildings in town that are four stories already, and I think as long as it's less than fifty feet, if somebody wants to build a four-story apartment building, we shouldn't be stopping them, so.
Can we add that to the housing discussion?
Yeah, that, it's, it's on one of my mini items that I'll be discussing, yeah, so.
Yeah, perfect, thank you. Anything else? Okay, in the next week, if you have anything come up that you want, just let, let the mayor, Susan know. Hey, audience participation. Have anything to say? Come on up.
I just wanted to say, uh, thanks.
The mic, so they can hear you.
Yeah, just wanted to say thank you, Mayor Allison, I appreciate it, Kate Laird, and looking forward to serving on the Harbor Commission.
Thank you, thank you for your willingness to serve. It's not paid very well. Okay, council comments. Mayor is not here, Councilmember Sherman.
Oh, um, I just let's see, wasn't here last time, I just wanted to commend the police department for all their excellent work, and everyone else who helped with all of that. I really love this signage. Kevin, that's great, that's something that we really needed for a long time, so well done, that'll help, I think, quell some of the public concerns and comments about transparency, so, really nice. And, um, thank you for the financials, Helen, I went through all those, and I think late today, maybe Mimi changed her retirement date to June thirtieth.
What?
So, we're, but, we're going to have a party.
And I do want to add that this shows her dedication, she is worried that we are not going to be able to fill the Cordova Center position, and there's quite a few events happening this, these coming months, and rather than leave us high and dry, fending for ourselves, she is, she is delaying her retirement to be an assistant to sleep, so this is another example of when our employees go above the bill.
Yeah, very much appreciated there. Okay, Councilmember Carpenter?
I would echo, uh, Councilmember Sherman's comments, and, and for, as usual, this packet is very well organized, and we are speaking with these classes, getting this, and trying to get the
She's very good to understand.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Councilmember Kinsman?
Well, first off, thanks ever for your patience today, so, with that, I, I just want to say thank you to Chief Goss and of course his staff, you know, keeping our community safe, so continue the good work, please, and and not only that, but thank you for, you know, your very, what you put forward to the city about police was very thorough, so thank you, keep that coming, and I'm sure you'll continue to find support, so. With that, thanks to the rest of the staff, this was a big packet, but a lot of information, a lot of thorough information, so keep that coming as well, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones.
I echo the comments before me.
Okay, Vice Mayor Schaefer.
I'd like to welcome Casey, glad to have you on council, and also thank you to Kate Laird for stepping up for the Harbor Commission, and I'd like to ask all the comments, making staff, for the, all the work that went into the packet, and just generally all the work, it takes big things out of the city moving along, and thank you all for the, I vote of confidence maybe for mayor, and I look forward to doing serving.
Okay, thanks, thank you, Anne. And, yeah, welcome Casey to the council table here, thank you for all of the people that put their name in for, for various boards and commissions, we can't do our work without you, and it's much appreciated, so, that being said, I think that we don't have an executive session, correct?
Correct.
So, is there any objection to adjournment? Are you done? Thank you.